Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Superior Town Council for Monday, February 24th, 2025. Can we all please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance? Roll call, Shannon?
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Serbu.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Here.
Councilmember Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Kraykraft.
Here.
Town manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is item 2C, which is approval of the agenda. Do we have any items that you'd like to pull from the agenda? Or otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as drafted.
Can I pull 5F, please?
5F? Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with 5F bold.
So moved.
Got a motion from Councilmember Kraykraft.
Second.
Got a second from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu, and we'll do a roll call vote because Mike is virtual.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Yes.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Yes.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Foster. Mayor Pro Tem Jason Serbu.
Yes.
Councilmember Heather Kraykraft.
Yes.
All right, we're on to item 2D, which is our council reports. Who would like to go first tonight?
I'll jump in.
All right, Mike?
Oh, he's got it. Sorry, this will be quick. Tomorrow, February 25th, Boulder County is hosting a public meeting with their composting facility consultant to talk about where the county is in its composting facility analysis. Some community members may recall that a few years ago, Boulder County explored a composting facility, and the timing just wasn't quite right, or the location wasn't quite right. So Boulder County is going to be hosting a feasibility study tomorrow night with the public, and it's at 1901 63rd Street in Boulder from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. No reservation is required. You can just show up. That's my update.
Thank you, Mike.
Jason? Yeah, just jumping real quick. There's been a lot of things going on. I'll let the rest of the board members talk about those things so I don't duplicate. One thing I did want to mention, there's been a couple of people I've talked to in the community regarding mice foals and varmints that people find to be, you know, obviously, things they didn't want in their house. Please, I just want to send a reminder to the people in the town, do not poison the mice or the voles. It's very, very important. It's part of the food chain of the natural ecology of Colorado, and especially this area. What happens when you poison a mouse? It doesn't die in your house. It walks away to the outside, and then it'll die in the field and be picked up by an owl, or a falcon, or a wolf, or, I'm sorry, coyote. The problem being is that that animal will not die a very painful death. So please, natural methods of controlling mice and voles is preferred in this town. If you can at all do, capture and release is fantastic. Mousetraps, well, a lot of people scream you, so that's probably a really good way to get rid of them. And my number one favorite way is just get a couple of cats, and that basically takes care of everything. So I'm all in favor of more cats. Went to the Mahai Flood District meeting last Friday, or last Thursday, rather, excuse me, and I actually got a chance to sit on the engineers meeting beforehand, and that is a really, really interesting meeting to go into. And I know that Councilmember Shaw was ahead of me on the Mahai Flood District, and if it's just something you've never attended, it is such an amazing event. You actually get to see how the things begin. How does the Flood District determine which area is basically needing flood mitigation? And you go through the process, and the engineers are so thoughtful that it's very, very easy in the language. They don't talk high-end engineering talk. It's very, very easy for laymen to understand, so I was really appreciative of that. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that Colorado Attorney General Phil Weiser has filed seven lawsuits aimed at the Trump administration, and they include defunding medical and public health research, federal worker buyout, also known as the Fork in the Road Directive, the Department of Governmental Efficiency, also known as DOGE, regarding access to payment systems, federal funding freeze, birthright citizenship, firearm safety measures, and the DACA recipients and healthcare access. The reason I'm bringing this up is because Representative Kyle Brown is hosting a town hall, a virtual one, with Representative Karen McCormick from House District 11. It's going to be on Tuesday, March 4th, from 6:30 to 7:30. And it'll also include Phil Weiser's Deputy Attorney General for Intergovernmental Affairs, Kurt Morrison. So all are welcome, but you must register ahead of time, and you can get that information at kyleforcolorado.com, or you can email me, and I can send you this link directly. I'll definitely be on that town hall. It's important to see which direction the Attorney General is taking for the residents of Colorado, and specifically how it affects us in the town of Superior. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Heather?
Sure. I represented as liaison to OSAC, so I hope that's okay, Stephanie. Just give a quick reminder of a few things happening in the near future. The Goat Brothers meet and greet is March 1st, 11 AM to 2 PM. If you have not seen that in the communications from the town, fantastic way to meet our lovingly, graciously grazing animals in town. Also wanted to just give a plug from a community nonprofit that has spoke to us at that meeting that I attended, Friends of Coal Creek, that is building a community of pollinators with our gardens along Coal Creek. So OSAC will be sharing more details, so keep an eye out on ways to learn more, volunteer, or build your garden into the next B-spot. And then also, OSAC is also, or they were sharing, excuse me, Friends of Coal Creek, that there is a Firewise Garden Workshop in Lewisville at the Rec Center on April 8th from 7:00, I think it starts at 7:00 PM, and I will clarify and make sure that is kind of shared as well. Should be some great resources for anyone that is looking to update their garden. Also, representing Historical Commission, we'll hear from them tonight on the Marshall Fire Remembrance update, which I'm looking forward to. And lastly, visited Crack Boba in downtown Superior this past week. Just wanted to give them a plug. Fantastic, especially when you're a rookie and ask 10 or 20 questions about what to get, what not, you know, what's the best combination. It is really fun. It's a great way to take a friend, kind of have some interesting conversations, and support a local business. So enjoyed it and recommend it.
Thanks, Heather.
I would love to go next.
I didn't even call on you. How'd you know?
Just a couple of quick updates. One, I attended the State of the Chamber. So anybody who has a business, especially a home-based business, on their homepage, if you go over to Events and Programs, about halfway down, there's something called the Superior Business Toolkit. This is kind of a first of its kind. I bet you can expect other municipalities and chambers to be following suit. But this is a great toolkit for anything and everything you could possibly need related to a business. So how to start a business, marketing, financial help, licenses, taxes, patents, and copyrights. So anything you can possibly think of that you need help with, please visit their website and check it out. It's all free and really just a great resource for our business community. And then the only other thing I have in my ever, never-ending effort to make sure that our community is fraud-safe, I wanted to share our fraud tip of the week, which is around credit cards. So just a few best practices around those. If you can use a Tap to Pay, and if you use Apple Pay, or I'm assuming, I don't know, on Android, is it Google Pay or something like that, use that if you can, because a Tap to Pay sends an encrypted card number. It's not your actual card number, so that way your card number is safe, and it's a one-time-use kind of encrypted number. So use Tap to Pay whenever possible. Try not to swipe. On all of your cards, you should have zero balance alerts. If it doesn't allow you to do a zero balance, do like a penny balance. And that way, anytime you swipe or tap your card, and there's a transaction over a penny, it will send you a text or an email to notify you. This is a great way to make sure that if there is any sort of fraudulent activity, you catch it immediately so that you can turn your card off. I would designate credit cards, especially for gas stations, have just a very low-balance credit card designated specifically for your gas purchases. And that way, you can protect your other cards so you don't have fraud, because especially at gas pumps, we see a lot of fraud with gas pumps and your credit cards. So if you've got one designated, and it does end up getting fraud on it, then you can just turn it off, and it's not something where you have to reset all of your automatic payments. So definitely do that. And also likewise, for internet purchases, if you have a credit card, like a Capital One card, where it has a virtual card number, be using that instead of your actual card number. So if it is compromised, it doesn't compromise your entire card, because again, that's a bit of a pain. And then if you're entering any sort of credit card information, any like specific sensitive information, so that would be anything that's not public, so your credit card information, social security numbers, anything like that, make sure that you are not entering that on non-secure sites. And you can tell if it's secure, because in the address bar, it'll have a little padlock that's locked, or it'll have HTTPS, and that S stands for secure. So just be careful if you're on the internet and putting any sort of information on there that's sensitive, that you are not entering that on websites that are not secure. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks. So a couple announcements. The ACES Committee is going to be hosting a Touch an EV Truck event on, I think it's March 15th. Yeah, at the Community Center from 11 to 1. So family-friendly event. There'll be stuff for them to climb on. Very cool EV collection truck out there. They'll have some snacks and things for the kids to play with, and possibly maybe some compost caddies, which is kind of the next thing that they're going to be working on. And then also want to remind people that the last Sunday of every month, we'll be hosting a veterans meetup for the town of Superior. And this is for veterans, veteran-adjacent, family members, you know, anybody that's connected to the military and wants to, you know, be in community over that. We met this Sunday. There was about eight of us. At times, there's been 10, and I think it's growing. People are starting to learn about it. So we're really just kind of setting this committee up. And the purpose of it is for, there'll be a couple of events that we participate in, but a lot of it is for advocating for veterans' benefits in Colorado. Colorado's not a great state for veterans' benefits. We, as a veteran, like there's not a lot of offerings, and it's very difficult to get to 100% disability, which then allows you to qualify for some things. And even in the scale of the other states, Colorado just, it doesn't offer a lot. So some of the work that we want to do as a group is organize and advocate at the state level for veterans' benefits. So if you have any connection, or you see yourself, you know, being involved in that, please come out. I was very happy, this kind of joins with what Councilmember Serbu was speaking about, the AG filing, you know, with the federal issues that are going on. I think, as I have in every meeting since the election, just want to acknowledge that this isn't normal. This is not, we're not used to dealing with this. This isn't business as usual. And so I just, I don't want people to feel alone, or that you're processing this on your own. I mean, every day, it's a new thing that we're all reacting to in our community. We have a lot of civil service, federal workers, researchers, grant-funded people that are being affected by this, and we're hearing about it. So just know that while we might not be doing anything right here, right now, there's a lot of collective action going on, and resource gathering, and information gathering. And the efforts to try to create a safety net should things become worse. And just know that that's on our radar, and we're looking at areas where we can be protecting the city, the town, and where we can be protecting just regionally. And we don't know what that's going to look like yet, because every day it's a new thing. And so just know that you're not alone, and we're all going through this with you. I was very happy in the veterans' meeting, you know, with veterans, you never know. The span is broad on political leanings, and you just never know. And I was very happy to see across the board, and all ages, from young veterans to, you know, Vietnam-era veterans, very angry, very frustrated collectively about what's going on. And so there's another organization that's ready to go stand on desks and call for accountability from our state and federal leaders. And I'm very happy to be a part of that group and see where it goes with that. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jen. Neil?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Actually, it might take longer than a couple of minutes. So handful of updates. You know, first apologies for missing the community meeting about the Coal Creek Drive and Rock Creek intersection, along with the Team Rubicon Tree clearing event on Friday. Thanks to staff for organizing both events, and it was great seeing a large number of attendees via Mayor Laces's pictures. Unfortunately, I was stuck on Keystone after ICADA was closed on Thursday evening following a snowstorm. As I was driving home slowly the next day, I was reminded that CDA, years ago, used to apply a lot of sand to our roadways to provide traction. They stopped doing that in part due to the substantial impact it was having on air quality in the metro area. Most of us that have been here forever vaguely recall the Denver brown cloud we'd see every winter, and a lot of that was driven by the sand that, you know, sort of got vaporized into the air. So in the absence of traction, a bunch of semi trucks started sliding all over the place, and the Colorado State Patrol shut the highway down, and I spent another day in Keystone. But anyways, on Wednesday last week, the night before, I attended a Dr. Cog meeting, which began with a discussion on the metro air quality, lo and behold. Anyways, other than the regular meeting issues at Dr. Cog, there's a robust conversation about federal funds that are supposed to be coming to Dr. Cog from the EPA. Dr. Cog received a $200 million climate pollution reduction grant last year under the Inflation Reduction Act. At this point, everybody is very much uncertain on how to proceed, given the risk that government funds, they often come via reimbursement. So while the portal for reimbursements was reopened last week under court order, there was substantial amount of uncertainty about progressing on contracting with any of those federal funds, given the possibility of a clawback, as we've seen in New York. So for now, right, you know, Dr. Cog is progressing very cautiously. We did approve a $9 million grant, or we did approve $9 million to work on the marketing around this, but the staff at Dr. Cog is not going to move forward with that, and so they know the funds are actually in our hands, or not at risk of getting clawed back. Finally, earlier today, and this goes to Councilmember Cowish's point, this is not normal. Yes, the staff is sitting there not knowing what to do about the $200 million that, you know, this state, this Denver metro area was successful in getting. And it's sort of, you know, has ground everything to a halt. So finally, earlier today, I did visit the BVSD Science Fair for middle and senior high students. It was, as every year, amazing to see what our kids are doing through, you know, the relative scientific progress. So some of the topics that they covered included: comparison of Aurora activity with thermosphere, ionosphere, Na and Fe layers at McMurdo Station; plausibility of abiotic formation of Martian poppy seeds and leopard spots through the oxidation of iron sulfide grains; assessment of stream flows availability for the Denver Metro Front Range; analyzing gene expression and precision-cut lung slices to investigate causal mechanisms involved with chronic lung disease. So I bring this up not because I want to feel, you know, slightly smart that I can read this, but it does feel like there's a war on science all over again. You know, funding and jobs are suddenly going to get, are getting cut on a whim. And we do need to remind ourselves that, and everyone else, that pure research does not usually just get funded by industry. It takes super smart people, unencumbered by profit requirements, to come up with these revolutionary findings. A few examples of these include the internet, GPS, MRIs, antibiotics, and of course, Velcro. That's it.
And what would we do without Velcro? I wouldn't tie my shoes. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Couple of things to report on. So on February 20th, I attended the Rock Creek Parkway Coal Creek Drive Intersection Improvements Public Meeting. Many thanks to Brandon Richards and our Public Works staff for putting that together, and for all the residents who attended. For those of you who didn't attend the meeting, the meeting is on YouTube. You can watch the video. You can also see the slide deck that was presented at that meeting, as well as participate in a non-scientific informal survey that we're doing to weigh in on potential intersection improvements at Rock Creek Parkway and Coal Creek Drive, which could include a traffic light, or a traffic circle, or none of those improvements. So if you're interested in that area, that survey is open. We're going to be making a decision on March 10th related to the hiring of the design contract for that Rock Creek Parkway intersection. So this is very timely, and we definitely want to have the public's input on that. Last week, I had a meeting with the mayors in Joe Nogus's district, and Joe Nogus. And one of the things that Congressman Nogus has asked his constituents is to trust, to Councilmember Cowish's point, and Councilmember Shaw's point about these being uncertain times, and obviously, there's been a lot of disruption due to the activities of the current administration and the efforts of the DOGE group, is they're specifically interested in any specific federal agency layoffs or consequences from funding freezes that people in his district are suffering. So if you know an employee who has received an email that has been laid off, if you know somebody who's relying on federal funding dollars that have now been freeze, they want to hear from you. So reach out to Joe Nogus's office. Emma Marion is the contact there, and they're basically compiling a master database of all the specific impacts and how it's impacting the second congressional district, which we are a part of. This morning, I spoke in a Business Den panel down in Cherry Creek about the future of suburban development. It was a really interesting panel to hear about how the Front Range is developing from Fort Collins down to Colorado Springs, and what specifically developers are looking for, and kind of the efforts that they are trying to deliver housing in this market with the challenges of, you know, interest rates being what they are, and certain jurisdictions being more friendly than others. So it was really interesting to hear their perspective on things, and I think that I have some takeaways that I'm going to pass on to staff as to how we can make sure that we do a good job in processing development applications for the future. A couple meetings to keep on the radar. On March 3rd is our quarterly council work session here in council chambers. And then on March 10th is our next council meeting. It'll be our only meeting for March. We'll be talking about the design contract for Rock Creek Parkway. We'll also be talking about the design contract for the north, and, or the hiring the firm to do the design for the north and south pools. So both of those projects are going to be funded out of the ballot proceeds from the sales tax ballot measure that was passed in November. So if you're interested in either of those topics, please attend and let us know your thoughts. Lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out and thanks and kudos to Councilmember Cowish. I think what she is doing with the veterans' meetup is something that is really creative and demonstrates just tremendous leadership, and sets a good example. We do a lot, we wear many different hats here on the council, but anytime that a council member goes kind of above and beyond what we typically do, and kind of serves a underserved aspect of our community, I think it's worth noting. So keep it up, Jen. I appreciate that you're doing it, and I look forward to seeing what you do in the future with them. And that is my report for tonight. Manager Magley?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a heads up to the council. We're going to start scheduling dinners with the advisory committees, and we plan on having those on regular council meeting nights from 6:00 to 7:00, like we did last year. So first one will be March 10th, so I'll put that in the digest this week, the schedule.
That's it. Town attorney Hartman?
Nothing here.
All right. And our town clerk? Okay. And we're on to public comment, right? And we have, we're going to take public comment on our consent agenda, presentations, and non-agenda items. If you'd like to make public comment, we've got a sign-in sheet there at the desk. Please write your first and last name and the city in which you live. You don't need to give your full address. When you come up to the podium, if you could just announce your first and last name so we know who you are, we will give you public comment for five minutes per person. And if you're participating via Zoom, and you'd like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature, and we will call on you in the order in which we see your hand raised. First up, Mr. Cheek.
My name is Chad Cheek, 2415 Andrew Drive. And before I dive in, I want to give a huge shout out to this council and previous boards. Most of who you will hear from tonight wouldn't even be here and have the opportunity to speak without your hard work and everything that you've done. So please know that in our comments tonight, that that is taken to heart, and we sincerely appreciate everything that you guys have done. The strong presence of our community tonight is in support of rezoning Town 15 for open space, parks, and civic use. We are not in support of the discussion surrounding rezoning this epic piece of land to residential. The comprehensive plan under review has pushed this topic to the forefront, and we would simply appreciate your support to preserve Town 15. The timing of our appearance is not by our choice, but we do feel that it is urgent that you hear from us. The conversations about the Planning Commission meeting on February 4th and the Town Council meeting on February 10th have our attention. Surveys conducted to date were disregarded by your consultant in the last council meeting. And in February 4th Planning Commission meeting, Andrew Drive was characterized in a manner that, well, probably unintended, came off as unprofessional and unwarranted. To clarify the representations made, there is no threat of legal action being made by those of us in this room, and we were referenced as noisy neighbors, which is unfair considering everything Andrew Drive, Ajax, and Bristol has had to come to over, overcome to rebuild. And then this is dear to us, as you can tell. Our area was significantly devastated by the Marshall Fire, which resulted in the loss of 37 homes. And with your help and the help of the entire 80027, we have successfully rebuilt 26 of these homes, with three more currently under construction. 90% of these rebuilds involve original owners. We rebuilt with the impression that the development conversation was leaning into the post-21 master plan. Had the idea been that residential was on the table, I can safely say that most of us would have made a different choice. For my family, any development would have substantial financial impact when we were still recovering from the Marshall Fire and carrying the equivalent of two mortgages right now. Any loss of house value would be financially crushing, but more than that emotionally. We purchased our home in this location for the mountain view and the tranquility of its surroundings. We loved it so much that we invested and rebuilt in the same spot, and we planted our flag. Superior is home. With a development of any height, when we started researching after the meeting last week, even with a 60-foot setback and a 25-foot roof line, our view is completely gone. The home we lost and are still trying to learn to love again would not be the same, and our forever home would feel very different, and we would have to reconsider what forever means. For our community, we are still three years and two months into- For our community, we are still three years and two months into the rebuilding process that has yet to complete eight lots. The prospect further of development in the next decade is both exhausting and terrifying for an area that has been deeply traumatized. If you rarely drive down Andrew Drive, I highly recommend doing so as we are constantly navigating through dumpsters, construction vehicles, and there have been incidences where I've been late to work due to trucks blocking my driveway. But despite these challenges, we remain resilient and then we endure because we genuinely want our neighbors to return home. However, the prospect of any development, including a potential massive one behind us, is just simply too overwhelming. We're a close-knit community. Our community extends well beyond Andrew Drive and our appeal to you tonight is genuine. We are requesting that you preserve Town 15. We are in support of the concept presented by Councilmember Miller to a previous board for a nature preserve and a community garden. The solution would provide a nature trail that is level and walkable for our seniors, unlike the Colton Trail. It also has the benefit of protecting the wildlife that frequents the space. We are requesting direct engagement from the town planning department regarding their plans for the development with respect to Town 15. We understand that the use of Town 15 must benefit the entire community as it should. We agree. We don't believe that any housing put on this plot would qualify as affordable or and we have questions about the proposals at hand. We have actively participated in surveys. We've utilized the opportunities provided. However, in the meeting on the last town council meeting, the consultant referenced that you could ignore those comments as any such survey would indicate opposition to additional housing as being common. We hold this board in the highest of regards and we have consistently regarded this hall as a platform where we can provide direct feedback to you. Please consider our requests, take our heart, take to heart our stories, and please deeply ponder the unintended consequences that would arise from the development of this parcel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today. As a survivor of the Marshall Fire, I made the difficult decision to rebuild and remain in this community, taking on a significant financial burden to do so. That decision was based on the understanding the land behind my property was designated civics, miscuse, as outlined in the 2021 post-plan, not for high to medium density housing. The space holds a tremendous potential to benefit the entire community, whether a library, senior center or other shared public resource. It already serves as a vital gathering place, hosting community events like movies in the park, the chili cookoff, while also providing overflow parking that enhances accessibility for all. My home is still under construction and my neighbor has only just poured his foundation. As we work to rebuild our lives, we ask that careful consideration be given to how this land is used. Preserving it as a civic space would strengthen the sense of community that makes Superior so special. I truly appreciate the time and dedication of each and every one of you in shaping this town's future by working together. I believe we can find a solution that best serves all residents. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you for your comments.
Jamie Dixon. I'm Jamie Dixon. I'm a 26-year resident. I live on Hart Strong Street. And I'm here tonight to reinforce my support for the town to expand their support of OSAC's recommendation to reduce the usage of rodenticides in our town. I appreciate your comments on this, Mayor Protamsebu. I appreciated the communication from Parks and Rec in February on how to safely manage pests. I agree with the direction of providing education and encouragement for residents on this project. Often, the best approach is to make people aware of their alternatives to managing a pest problem versus visiting the huge wall of poisons at the local hardware store. In addition, I would like to encourage the board to consider actual restrictions on the pesticide companies working in our town. I emailed the board last month about my experience talking with one of the companies that they that work here and they reassured me with an example of a cat eating a mouse that had ingested poisons. They said it would not hurt the cat. This is a very misleading statement. It might, and I do emphasize might, not kill the cat, but it will impact its health. The sad cases of mange in our coyote population is a prime example of this. When coyotes eat poisoned rodents, the effect is cumulative in their bodies. It impacts their immune system and they can no longer fight off the mite that causes mange. It also thins their blood so much that they can literally bleed out from a simple, small cut. The pesticide companies put out these black boxes with mouse poisons that have EPA restrictions. Online, it is recommended that these boxes be located such that children and pets cannot have access if they are located on front yards and on sidewalks with no restrictions. In the last year, within a six-month period, I personally had to call on our animal protection officers to help me with two dead great horned owls found in our neighborhood. These owls most likely ingested food that was poisoned. Now that we have active owl nests, the owl parents will be bringing back rodents and rabbits to feed their young. Are they going to be feeding them poison? I have a couple of posters that I think are fairly significant. It says, "I like my meals poison-free." And it says, "Rat poison kills more than rats." There's a second poster that is actually the Toxic Food Web that shows one of those black boxes and it shows all the places that these, that poison goes up the food chain to different animals. There's actually a new version of this that has a child on it. It does have a dog and a cat and then other wild animals. And I have copies of this, if anybody would like them. Avoiding rodenticides will help our native predatory species and also decrease the chance that a cat or a dog is exposed to poisons directly or indirectly. I would also like to make people aware that there is a five-page guide to safer alternatives to pesticides. It's available on the table at the community center. It's a very helpful resource to address rodent problems in a safe way. Our native predator populations like coyotes, foxes, owls, hawks and eagles are our partners in rodent control. Let's keep them healthy and not poison their food. If we take care of them, they will take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jeff Cody. Good evening, Jeff Cody. Not surprisingly, Andrew Drive here in Superior. I'm here to state my support of Town 15 being zoned for parks, open space, trails and civic use and not being zoned for residential use, i.e. housing. The comprehensive plan that's currently under review dictates that we take strong action in seeking support from town council and fellow residents to preserve Town 15. I appreciate that Town 15 is being referred to as an opportunity area, as are the plethora of other opportunity areas throughout the town that are being considered in the comprehensive plan. Town 15 and all of these opportunity areas were given thorough review and much feedback was solicited from citizens. That's why we have the post-master plan of 2021. My question is, why abandon those voices now? An opportunity is defined as an occasion or a situation that makes it possible to do something. Right now, the town council, the planning commission, the town of Superior have the opportunity to do something positive that would be appreciated and cherished by future town councils and residents. We also have the opportunity to demonstrate patience. What do I know of patience? As a standing home remaining from the Marshall Fire, surrounded on three sides by total losses around us, across from us, up and down the street, we endured physical damage and an emotional toll that too many in the community know. Our back and forth with our insurance company concluded just this last June. For those of you doing the math in your head, that's two and a half years later after the fire. Patience. We moved back into our damaged home just five weeks after the devastating fire and we watched eight months of debris removal from our charred deck. Patience. We've been shaken out of bed at 5:00 AM by excavators and dump truck convoys. We've been trapped in our driveway by a line of cement trucks, not knowing when or how we'll get to work. Patience. We've contemplated on more occasions than I can count. If we made the correct decision to return to a home that we couldn't even be sure if it was safe, let alone repaired adequately without financial ruin. We lived through and learned about patience in a way I never could have imagined and hope never to again. Yet we still live in a very active construction zone with eight empty lots with homes not even having started construction and a handful that are in the building stages. The thought of major construction taking place on Town 15 is simply too much to bear. So yes, I know patience. And while the residents of Superior and surrounding areas have exhibited much patience since the Marshall Fire, we, the direct victims on Andrew, Ajax and Bristol, because we are directly adjacent to Town 15, should be given greater consideration and simply cannot be subjected to the trauma of major construction on Town 15 for years to come. That is why we're asking you, our elected town council, for patience. We appreciate the work of the planning commission and their time and expertise. Just as they are residents, we are also residents who were so significantly impacted by the fire. And we ask that you listen to our expertise and our experience, as well as the voices of the community as a whole, voices which you heard through your community-wide surveys and outreach that went into the 2021 post-master plan update. Therefore, we implore that you take this opportunity to preserve Town 15 as an area for trails accessible to all, natural play and educational experiences. Sidebar, it appears the town's beloved owls have recently returned to one of the few natural nests in town, on the edge of Town 15, for another nesting season, which will hopefully yield more outlets. And mostly, an opportunity to show patience so that future town councils and residents will look back on a thorough, transparent process in which this town council and we citizens made the crucial decision to preserve Town 15 as an area for parks, open space, trails and civic use for all ages and abilities throughout the entire town of Superior to enjoy and benefit from. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I didn't get the memo, so I didn't write anything down. So I'll make it brief. Well, thank you all for your time, your effort to lead the dialogue for a better town in the future. I am a 20-year resident in the city. I raised three children in this town. I do like to ask the town, consider looking at Town parcel 15 at the park, sports arena of some sort, open space for the common good of the community. I am opposed additional housing development in that parcel. So after COVID, after Marshall Fire, we all have gone through that reflection period as to what makes a town a wonderful place for all ages, for all families, for all people of social status. So I do hope we take the time to reflect, contemplate how we collectively use the resource we do have to really enhance the quality of life for the current residents and make this city really a wonderful place for the state of Colorado to look up to. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Herschel. My husband and two little boys, we live on Ajax and we back up to Town 15. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak in front of you and in front of the audience. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and the need for more parks and recreation space in our community, specifically regarding the vacant land on Town 15. As we all know, parks are not just a place for children to play. They are essential space that serves everyone, from families to retirees, from active individuals to those seeking quiet time in nature. First and foremost, parks and recreational facilities have a significant impact on our health and well-being for our residents. I speak to you as a local citizen, a parent and one of those dealing with mental anxiety. Studies consistently show that spending time in green spaces reduces stress, increases physical activities and improves mental health. This is the reason I moved my family from Houston, Texas to beautiful Superior so my children could play, could enjoy the benefits of a year-round outdoor lifestyle, but also for me and my needs. This little piece of land on Town 15 is the first view I see every morning when I wake up and it truly provides me the mental freshness I need to start my day. In respect to studies surrounding the well-being of residents, communities with easy access to parks have lower rates of obesity, heart disease and mental health issues. The physical, emotional benefits of these spaces are undeniable. Secondly, parks serve as a crucial community hub that bring people together. In today's digital age, it's easy for individuals to become isolated. But parks provide space for face-to-face interactions and connections, whether it's through sports leagues, picnics, or simply meeting neighbors while walking a dog. These spaces foster a sense of belonging and social connections. And let's not forget the economic benefits. Well-maintained parks increase property values, attract tourists and create job opportunities within the community. As our town continues to grow and recover from the Marshall Fires, the demand for accessible green space will only increase. We need to prioritize the expansion and development of parks now to ensure that future generations can enjoy the same benefits we experience today. I'm not just talking about adding a few benches or planting a couple of trees. I'm advocating for creating well-rounded recreational environments that include walking trails, playgrounds and a community garden. By doing so, we can create space that serve a wide variety of needs and ensuring that nobody is left out. So I urge this council to consider the long-term impact of our decision-making. Invest in parks and recreation is an investment in our future for our town. Let's work together to create a healthier, more connected and vibrant community where people of all ages can thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, council. My name is Orin Beerkatz. Been a resident of Superior since 2006, so almost 20 years, and on Andrew Drive. So I'm here to talk about the owls. No, I'm here to talk about Town 15. I'm going to echo a lot of what my neighbors here said. We have lost a house in the Marshall Fire. It took us three years and innumerable fights with insurance and other issues to come back. And we made the decision to come back. We already had a place in Broomfield, but we made a decision to fight, rebuild, come back because this is Superior. And as the name indicates, we really think it's a superior place. So Town 15 is that open space where we take walks, where we take our new puppy and is that green lung, for a term to say, this is where we have open residency. This is the open park we have. The idea of going through, and I'm going to repeat some of the things said here, another five, 10 years of construction and then having 300 more people blocking the view and traffic and noise and all the hardship, that's not going to be Superior anymore. That's going to be a completely different place. Zoning this as a park where we can enjoy that, as again was stated multiple times, is the preferred outcome of every survey I'm aware of. And I think there were like three different questionnaire surveys and such in the recent years, all of which said the same. So why is this again on the table? It was answered and answered and answered a third time. Why is this again an issue? I understand that there were consideration, I assume, the consideration of practical benefits, maybe financial benefits to the town. Let me ask this. We're talking about 300 units or so that are low housing income. How low will those prices remain? I'm looking at downtown Superior. So those apartments, even if they're initially sold for low prices, they will immediately be turned over for much, much higher prices and the whole aspect of low housing income will probably be negated within a very short timeframe. So I don't see the benefit there. Plus, another 300, 400, 500 cars on Colton, on McCaslin, on that parking area will just create havoc. So with all, all financial considerations taken account, I do not see a profit or benefit for the town in the long term. Speaking as a survivor of the Marshall fire, the emotional damage here is significant for our colleagues that survived and had their house and for us that lost a house and had to rebuild. There's a value for the proposition here that is also financial. This is what our house is worth. This is our family's net worth. This is our inheritance to our kids. And if that were to change so drastically, it would be a significant cut into our net worth, into what our house was, into what we pass on to our kids. So from every aspect I can think of, the emotional damage, the noise, the traffic, the financial, the benefit that might be considered coming, I, which I personally do not think will be there in five, ten years after, I do not see an upside at all. And the fact that this was asked three times and answered three times. And this is now the fourth occasion, I believe, that it's coming up. I don't understand why it's coming up yet again. So here I want to lend my voice and my support to zoning town fifteen, as was discussed here, as a park with benefits that keep Superior, Superior and not yet another concrete jungle like downtown Denver that really who wants to live there. There's a reason we all live here and now down those places. So I'm adding my voice to keeping town fifteen park or whatever else we want to zone it, but not residential. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
I am one of the very few original residents on Andrew Drive. I got this house in December of nineteen ninety five for one hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. I was offered the house twenty four fifty five across the street from me for a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. But I just didn't think I could afford that. But what made me want to get that house that I'm in right now was the open space, what's now considered town fifteen. And my neighbors who live near me knew that just a few months before the Marshall fire, I had lost a lot more than just a house. And I lost a lot more than just that house after the fire was over with. And like this, this lady over here on, who lives on Ajax Court had mentioned, that open space is therapeutic. It helps to reduce anxiety. It's cathartic. And I don't want to lose that. I'm going through some PTSD because of the stuff that I have lost before the fire and after the fire. And I ask that town fifteen stays the way it is. Don't turn it into a resident, another residential area, please. For the sake of all of us, we bought our homes because of that open, well, not because of, but it was part of the reason we bought those homes is because of the open space. You know, just keep it the way it is. I don't know what else to say to you, you know? Let it be the way it is. That is part of the reason why we bought these homes on Andrew Drive and Bristol Street, Ajax Court and the other cul de sac, which I'm sorry, I don't know the name of it, but it's just, you know, down the road from us. You know, it's very important to us. It's extremely important to us that you keep it the way it is. I know that there's probably going to be tax revenue from make it into a residential zone. But oh my God, just please, for the, for the people who have lived there, like me, who have lived in this place since December of nineteen ninety five. And to have that view of the mountains taken away, it's, it's almost devastating. It's almost devastating. I, I don't know what to say. I just don't know what else to say. But let us have the view. Let us have the comfort of being in our own homes, looking out our windows and seeing the mountains off in the distance and not seeing a bunch of houses obstructing our view. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Is that it? All right. Anybody else in the room like to give public comment? Come on down.
Thank you, council. My name is Kawi. I live in Andrew Drive. So I'm on the Andrew Drive since twenty fifteen. Yeah, almost ten years. So a lot of my neighbors and friends, I would call them friends. We've been so connected so well. We've been through the, as many of you said, Marshall fire. I have an family. When we lost the house, everything, my son was nine months, my daughter was three. My son was not even walking. So we, we thought, we never evacuated in our life. That was the first time. And I'm an immigrant. I come from India. So I lived in tropical fire and all everything was, we seen the movies and earthquakes and all those things. We thought we'd come back, but then I went to my buddy's place in I news. I saw Chad home catching the fire and the other, the one home, two homes on the side. And then I, I didn't tell my wife, hey, I don't think, I told we should be okay, but I knew it's gone. And then along with that, two of my kids had a RSV virus that night. So next day morning I took my daughter to emergency before coming back to check my house, is there not? That's my personal touch, but still, we decided to come back and rebuild. We put everything we had, me and my wife. No FEMA, no SBA, nothing. We just started career like ten, fifteen years. In this economy, you know, we put everything thinking we're going to raise our family. We want to be here. I wake up every day, hey man, this is a great American dream I'm living. But now after listening, you're going to build some more houses. It's devastating. We request, please keep it as open space, something park, anything like that. And also one thing I want to stress out, which I personally feel, as many of you feel, is in a high wind corridor. I'm not atmosphere research expert, but somehow I feel the intensity of the wind in that aisle is very intense. So if you're walking, you don't feel that intense of fire here, the wind here, the maybe the uphill. Putting some more residential, it make it more vulnerable, more dangerous. Touch or nothing happened. If you think about it, put another hundred one house, I don't know, maybe fifty houses if something happened. I don't think it will take out the entire city. That's what I feel. But anyway, thank you so much. Again, one more thing is still a lot of empty lots. Maybe from a housing perspective, we may out CTS think about putting this, rebuilding some of those empty lots so that can accomplish some of the housing requirement. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the boardroom like to give a public comment? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Fay and I have lived here in my house since two thousand and six. Single mom. I saw most of you because you came to, to my home last week, which I greatly appreciate how connected you are to the community for doing that. I understand that there is a possibility of reversing the town fifteen to being residential. And I understand that there may be other areas in Superior that could accommodate residential versus turning town fifteen into residential. So I would just ask that you keep this, I'm all in favor for something civic, whether it's a rec center, library, something that brings our community together because since the fire, I have seen nothing but community from my neighbors, from and from you and from people throughout the town and even Lewisville. So it's been an amazing warm hug to live here. I'm truly grateful to be able to rebuild, although I did have to take out a second mortgage on the house, which again, I've been here since two thousand and six. I certainly wasn't expecting that. But to stay in my home on that land and to have the view, although town fifteen is not in my backyard, it's very close. It's really important for resale value and I hope that we can turn that corner into something that the community can use. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else in the room? All right, seeing none. I'll turn to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, seeing none. Public comment will be closed. I'll just say for the, for the record, thank you all for, for coming and speaking. I know many of you. There are no plans one way or the other right now with regards to the town fifteen. We're not considering any application to develop it. The town owns it. We are going through the comprehensive plan update and as part of that process, we designate land that is undeveloped and look at what potential future uses could be on those. Regardless of how that land is designated, that is a non binding designation that could change. So I know that there's been an ask here to actually take kind of a step beyond that and rezone it. We don't have any plans to rezone it one way or the other. That could change. But just to give everybody kind of the lay of the land, there is nothing imminent. There is nothing pressing. We will be going through various public meetings to approve and review the comprehensive plan. We value the public's input at that point as well, and we thank you for being here tonight. And with that, I will turn to item three on our presentation item for the agenda. And we've got the Marshall Fire Memorial Subcommittee Group for the proposed location and concept of the Marshall Fire Memorial.
Thanks, Mayor. I think Dalton, Dalton is going to lead this presentation for the council, for the group.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all today. Wait till everyone utters out.
No offense, Dalton.
Well, thank you all again so much for listening this evening. My name is Dalton Valet. I'm part of the Superior Historical Commission and I am also one of the members of the Marshall Fire Remembrance Committee. Previously, we were the Marshall Fire Memorial Committee, which is under the umbrella of CAPS. But we have changed our name to the Marshall Fire Remembrance Committee after being given input from Superior residents through multiple surveys. So right now we have an agenda which is looking at first and foremost, expectations for the council. We wanted to offer some insight into what we're dealing with right now as far as a proposal goes for everyone here. We're going to offer a little bit of background information, especially for some of the newest members of the council who might not have been part of the process going into this presentation previously. Some details on residential surveys. We recently had a second survey from residents. They're going to be giving some additional updates and all the results from that. The concept recommendations on what a potential Marshall Fire Remembrance area could look like and then what some of those practical next steps could entail. Expectations for the council. So ideally, we would like to see the council approve of the remembrance concept. So this includes three key components which have come from multiple surveys that we or a consulting group have identified that residents would like to see included in some shape or form in any sort of remembrance of the Marshall fire. The biggest item by far is making sure that this is a spot that residents have a place to gather. So as we looked at a specific area in Superior for residents that could gather in a designated spot, we also polled residents and I'll detail some of the results on that. Pet remembrance was something that was very critical to include as well within this concept, making sure that we recognized a number of the different pets that were tragically lost in the Marshall fire. Along with dispersed markers. So one of the interesting concepts that we learned from the consulting group was a way that a lot of municipalities, counties and countries recognize different events is through dispersed markers. So that could include little pieces of artifacts, historical details that are found throughout a specific geographic area. So they're not a large statue, for instance, there may be a simple placard, there may be a marker in the ground somewhere that as you're walking around a town, you find a spot that commemorates a specific person or event. And then we would have comments on the next steps in the process, along with a funding request. We are requesting some funds for this and that is broken down into two key factors, which I'll detail a little bit later. But the funds right now that we would request from the council equate to around twenty to twenty five thousand dollars. And then I'd please ask questions at the end. So the Marshall Fire Remembrance Subcommittee was formed in January twenty twenty four to engage with Superior residents to assess data that was gathered, gathered from a consultant and to kind of determine what would be the best way for Superior to remember this very historic event. This subcommittee is formed by a number of different members from all of the different other committees within Superior, making it a very kind of unique body. We have representation from the Historical Commission, from ACES, from Open Space, Prostack, OSAC, CAPS, making sure that we're really getting as much input as possible. But as you can see, we have been staying busy since we were formed. We had our very first meeting in January, as I mentioned. And since then, we have been going through different findings, survey results, meetings amongst ourselves to see how best we should proceed before making some additional recommendations to the council. So the purpose of this second survey we did was in kind of a response to survey details that really formed the basis of this subcommittee. We had, the town had received advice and insight from the consulting group, twenty three point four degrees. And the data was incredibly valuable. There was over four hundred resident responses with this. But by the time that we had formed and really began moving as a body, about a year and a half had passed. A lot of the comments that we read from this survey, we wanted to actually kind of assess to see are residents still feeling this way? We could definitely feel, I mean, as evident today still with some of the comments previously, a lot of emotion with this very sensitive subject matter. We wanted to see how best should we approach this very sensitive topic and gather as much insight as possible from residents. The last thing we wanted to do was seem like we were making a determination for all without getting some input from residents when it even came to the name of what this potential site could be. So we asked residents, what should the name of this project be? What is the general focus that they would like to see within any sort of remembrance of the Marshall fire? And then what area of town would be most appropriate for this location? So we had a hundred and fifty resident responses. They preferred the term remembrance over alternatives such as Marshall Fire Memorial or reflection or tribute. Remembrance was the data point that got the most support. As far as concepts, we polled residents on each of these three kind of items, the outdoor place to gather, a pet remembrance and a happen upon dispersed area throughout the town. And everyone was emphatic that they wanted all these elements incorporated in one way or the other. We are not designers in the commission. So that is why we would be putting the onus on creating a concept that can incorporate all of these elements for an artist proposal moving forward. So we would be very fascinated to see ultimately what artists can come up with. And as far as a location goes, this was maybe one of the most difficult areas for us to kind of assess and to get resident input on because it can be a very difficult subject, especially if you don't know, well, is this going to be a twenty foot tall statue? What is this actually going to look like? The concepts that we have do not include a twenty foot statue. But we ultimately Uh, but we ultimately determined that the ideal location would actually be the Orman Roche Trailhead, which a lot of initial reactions were a little surprised. Uh, I know when I saw some of the results coming in and seeing this, I got a little anxious because of the open space designation. The last thing that we want to do is to go to the ballots and request that this area be rezoned as anything but open space. In coming up with concepts for this location, we want it to include open space. We want this to be an area that doesn't actually disturb the natural landscape of this area too much, but is still an area carved out for residents to gather and look at. And actually at the location, there'll be more details on this later, but actually survey the area where the Marshall Fire impacted most of Superior itself. And one of the details too, that we wanted to be respectful and mindful of was we didn't want this in a very specific neighborhood. Uh, there was a lot of support for Founder's Park, which was the highest surveyed area, but a lot of the residents who selected Founder's Park did not actually live in Founder's Park. A lot of the residents who are from original town or from Sagmoor didn't select that area. And it seemed important to us to respect a lot of the individuals who were most impacted by the fires, to find basically the terminology that we went with is a politically neutral area. We wanted to go with the Orman Roche Trailhead because there aren't residents who live there, and it's also a place that you can go to and spend reflection and solitary time if you want to, while not having to be reminded of it, let's say if you're going to Target on a quick run. We also wanted to factor in some logistical components as well for making this a potential spot for a remembrance location. So as far as the concepts, I can turn this over to Mike.
Dalton, great job. So my name's Mike McDonald. I'm on the OSAC as well as the Subcommittee for the Marshall Fire Remembrance. So we're gonna go through the proposal. I think Dalton's done a great job setting it all up with all the detail up ahead. So, uh, again, gathering places, what we heard from the folks in the survey, elements of the pet remembrance that could be integrated into that, uh, location as well. And also the concept that this could be an anchor site, which would tie in and be consistent with some of the dispersed, uh, elements that might come up as part of the design. So as was mentioned, uh, we really had a lot of discussion around location and the neutral location that we chose for Orman Roche was, uh, for a number of reasons. One is has excellent views. Anyone who's been to that area knows that. Uh, it's also neutral in terms of not being, we heard a lot about the residents, uh, today in the specific area of Andrew Drive, et cetera. Uh, we didn't want it to be, you know, in, in a location in a neighborhood as, as Dalton pointed out. We also felt that we could build something that's sort of low profile, really blends in to the natural environment with stone or brick or some type of materials like that, uh, and utilize the hillside slope in the construction of the process. And it almost starts to look like a landscaping project more than an edifice of some kind. Um, and the idea is to have something low profile, kind of blends in, unobtrusive design. Um, Orman Roche has parking as well, which is important. If you're gonna have a gathering area, you do need to have, uh, places for people to park. There's an existing ADA, uh, path that's already started there, which we could leverage and build into, uh, for this location, which I'll, I'll show some, some photos in a moment here. Uh, and then the other thing that we touched on is this could be an amenity that for the town, not only for this remembrance, but for a gathering spot for people who are involved in wildlife, uh, monitoring, um, you know, the raptor monitoring programs, all the things that go into, um, making Superior such a great town to live in. So that's not to be overlooked as well. And then as Dalton mentioned, we are sensitive to not putting it into a particular area where people were reminded of it. If you put it into an existing park, for example, they come to play soccer with their kids and they're seeing something they may not intentionally want to go there. So it's, it's sort of a destination location as well. So this is, uh, just a photo and this is just an approximate location. So I took this picture with my back to the rings, um, it just, uh, north and adjacent to the parking lot at Orman Roche. So there's obviously a lot of undulation there. There's a bit of a flat spot. Uh, that would be kind of the thought process. Keeping it closer to the parking lot would require less, uh, ADA compliant pathway, because if you put it farther away, you're introducing a lot more path into, into the area. And so this is where I'm standing from this picture is at the end of the path where it overlooks the area. And as you can see, it does look to the west. It looks at, uh, a lot of the area that was impacted, um, by the Marshall Fire. These are just some other photos. This is a view looking from the parking lot, uh, to, um, to the ADA path as well. Uh, there's also an irrigation ditch which you can't see in the picture. It's sort of, uh, at the base of where that post is, but this path obviously goes around it. So there's not going to be any, you know, compromise or conflict with that, um, existing, uh, irrigation ditch that's there. I think we just have some other pictures. This is just a photo looking back towards the parking lot from the other, uh, direction. And then we put together, uh, I should say JG put together, I believe, uh, a rendering just of a concept. Again, this, we're not designers, uh, so this is really just to see kind of where the adjacency is with the parking lot and, and the kind of the high level concept. Uh, very low, low structure. Uh, as you can see, it's not to scale, but this is kind of the concept. Obviously this is why we're not designers here. We're just, uh, putting that out there so people can get some sense of what it looks like. And I think the last thing that we included here, I think this came from Brandon in CAPS, and really the design concept mirrors some of the Frank Lloyd Wright, not that we're Frank Lloyd Wright, but we're trying to bring in some of that, um, same concept where we're, we're not building something that's taking over the natural environment. It actually enhances, uh, our ability to be and enjoy the environment that's around us. So with that, I think we're gonna go to the next steps piece, and Dalton's gonna take back over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mike. Wonderful job. Uh, so as far as next steps go, uh, this is the funding ask. Uh, the first thing that we would like to assess as far as funds goes is actually doing a feasibility study to make sure that this as a specific location could feasibly be a spot where any sort of construction or landscaping could actually commence. Uh, town staff has estimated that cost would be at a maximum around $10,000, which would include soil study and geotech analysis. Uh, and if determinant that, uh, it is appropriate as far as a feasibility study goes, uh, the next steps would be to have us as a Subcommittee author a request for qualifications, an RFQ, uh, that would then go out to solicit design concepts from artists. Uh, one RFQ would contain all of the three design concepts, the place to gather, the pets, and the dispersed elements of this. Uh, and then we would act as a selection committee and choose ultimately three teams that we believe we would like to see more of their work. Uh, then those designers would receive a stipend, uh, which would be at a maximum $5,000 each. With that stipend, then they would actually craft their formal proposal for what this potential Marshall Fire Remembrance concept could look like. And as far as fundraising and budgeting concerns go, we've had a number of different discussions about that. I know, uh, you all as various members have discussed in length how supportive you are of being able to give funds to this project, make it feasible. Uh, we greatly appreciate that, and we also recognize depending on what the concept might be, we're more than willing and capable to look at potential fundraising options, uh, from private donors as well. Uh, and we do have a plan in place if depending on the overall scale and costs of the concept, uh, require that. So that is something we have more in mind because, uh, one of the things that I have kind of discussed is no matter what, if we did get a concept that required gold brick to be placed around everywhere, that's gonna be rejected. Uh, again, we do want to kind of embody Frank Lloyd Wright's belief in bringing nature in. We don't want this to be something that requires a lot of maintenance as well. There's a lot of different natural, uh, kind of areas that incorporate nature into it, but they are, uh, non-native plant lives. There are grasses that require a lot of irrigation, and that's something as far as a proposal goes that I think we're not very keen on. We would want to utilize the natural Colorado landscape to ensure the long-lasting endurance of Superior as a committee, as a community post-Marshall Fire. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, Dalton, for that presentation and Michael. Um, questions from the council?
Couple of quick ones. Number one, thank you for, you did a great job. I know there's a late handoff from Andrew to you on like Friday night, so you did a phenomenal job presenting this, Dalton. So, just a question kind of on the, on the funding piece of it, because I did go, you know, because we put nothing in the budget for 2025 for this. Um, obviously this is a, this is, this is not, um, it's part of the discussion, so it's, you know, come back to the board presumably for approval. Um, and we'll have to just kind of understand where it comes from. But I think what I wanted to do is just truly understand, and this might be a question to staff, you know, because in April, um, when we did talk about this last year, uh, let me double check where it was. That memo did say that, uh, staff and Subcommittee members are researching funding options. So it sounds like that's progressing. Um, so when this does come back to the board for, you know, approving the 25-odd K, it'd be helpful to understand kind of where we think the, the alternative funding is going, because I think there's a huge question in terms of our ability to take donations, and we need a 501(c)(3) and that's like a separate scope of work. Um, but, you know, I, I just want to be really careful that, you know, as we explore alternative funding, that there's a path to getting it, and it doesn't get lost in the general fund.
And I, I think the, um, action requested tonight is to approve the funding for the design and feasibility study.
Okay.
And then once a firm is selected, that would come back to the council.
That's correct.
Okay, it just, I'm sorry, Matt, it was in the presentation section, so, you know, taking action in the presentation section is not something we've done before. So, I mean, in terms, in terms of funding, so, um, but that's, that's fine.
Mike's got his hand up. Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Dalton and Mike, I just want to say thank you to y, y, your entire committee for doing just a tremendous job. I, when I first heard of this concept, the first location I thought of was, of Orman Roche. And so, um, I'm really glad to see all the hard work that, uh, you all have put in for the last 18 months is, is coming together tonight. So just kudos, um, well done. And I'm really just so pleased to see that you're looking at outside funding, um, to help supplement anything that the town might be able to contribute. So kudos to you and the team.
Thank you very much.
And, and just to, to clarify, um, to Neil's point, so I guess I, I agree with you that we typically don't take, you know, action on a, on a, on a presentation item. However, I, I guess what the ask is right now is essentially underneath the town manager's discretionary spending authority, which is at $50,000. So if, uh, if an item, and this is just for public transparency, if an item is, uh, over $50,000, it needs to come to the town council for us to approve. If it's under $50,000, the town manager has the discretion to authorize that expenditure without action from the council. So what we would be doing here is essentially giving Matt the, uh, informal kind of green light, thumbs up, yes, move forward, spend 20,000 to 25,000 dollars on this preliminary, um, geotech analysis and then, uh, the, the design. And then, once the design comes forward, then we would approve the final design and then, uh, the, any expenditures subject to whatever successful efforts you have to report on from, uh, fundraising efforts to, to help defray that cost, right? Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm all for it. I, I really appreciate the efforts of this Subcommittee. I think this is really important for our town, uh, to kind of, uh, cap off the, the healing, um, that we've all had to go through with the Marshall Fire. And, um, I think it's appropriate for us to acknowledge enough time has passed and, um, you know, while people are still going through their recovery, uh, I think for the town to, um, have a remembrance and have a, a place where people can gather and reflect on, uh, what happened and what we all went through and how we're moving forward is, is an appropriate thing for us to do. And I am fully supportive of moving this forward.
And Dalton, the only thing I wanted to say, uh, to both of you, fantastic job tonight. Orman Roche, whenever I tell someone, have you, have you been there? The, where is that? It was the Trailhead. And people don't really recognize it as Orman Roche, and it does have that wonderful story placard about the two women who unbelievably strong pioneers of this town. What steps can we do to make sure that in doing this memorial for the Marshall Fire, they're not forgotten? And it's not something that we just, oh, that's now the Marshall Fire Trailhead rather than the Orman Roche?
Yeah, great question. So that's something we've talked about in the Historical Commission too. Uh, we would love to be able to continue working with obviously any sort of development that happens in this specific area and highlight the individuals, uh, who names now grace the Trailhead. Uh, we're looking at a number of different ways to have documentation about not just the Marshall Fire, but also any sort of specific location too. Uh, at the Superior Historical Commission, we are very fortunate to receive a generous donation from the Lions Club, which will have an interactive display in the rebuilt museum. That'll feature, uh, images, uh, audio clips, newsreels, interviews with Superior residents about the Marshall Fire, along with history about any sort of location that we would have a Marshall Fire Remembrance at, uh, and the historical significance of that. Because I can attest as a personal history nerd, uh, I don't want these incredible leaders to be forgotten.
Excellent. Thank you.
I, um, would just like to add, I don't know if you guys have been in touch with the community foundation, but they, um, are happy to receive this presentation and take it to their committee for funding.
Yeah, we would absolutely be interested in that and presenting it to them as well. Thank you.
Good suggestion. All right. Any additional questions? All right. Well, thank you, Dalton. Thank you, Michael. Uh, we appreciate your work and thanks to the entire committee and, um, we look forward to seeing what you bring to us.
Thank you very much.
All right. And at this point, um, I know we have two high school students who have been very patient watching local government at work, and they're not here just because of their interest in local government. They're here to get maybe photographic evidence that they've shown up for their, for their teachers. So if you want to come up and let's take a picture of them.
Is this where we should put our calls?
Was it as bad as it sounded?
Ready, guys? Just one, two, three.
All right, we're moving right along. We're on to item, item number four, which is our project updates. We have none. And we're on to item number five, which is our consent agenda. We have polled item 5F. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda 5A, B, C, D, E, and G. So moved. We got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Craycraft. And roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster? Mayor Laces?
Yes. Passes unanimously. And Stephanie, you polled 5F?
I did. I just have a quick question. So everything with the change orders looks fine, but with change order number 13, have we approached Carmel Partners about them paying for that since they put in an HVAC and duct system that doesn't actually work for an HVAC system going in? Like, it just kind of seems like that's not a tenant improvement. That seems more like they didn't do it right the first time and now we're footing the bill.
Um, it worked and was designed appropriately for the open building, but not for the design when we enclosed some of the rooms. So, um, the ability to put a drop ceiling in there in that particular place, which is where the conference room is on the second floor, the ductwork didn't have enough headroom, uh, for there to be a ceiling in there. So we could have left it open, um, but it doesn't really serve the purpose very well, uh, if we were to do that.
Okay. Do you know if they'd be open to paying for that? I mean, obviously it's a design that we chose. Okay. Do you know if they'd be open to paying for that? I mean, obviously it's a design that we chose, but I wonder if they'd be willing to pay for it.
I, I have no problem asking that question and presenting that to them.
If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Yeah. And actually really appreciate having this pulled because I think we had the same conversation the last time with the change orders in terms of what Carmel had done. And I can't find it in my notes now, but one of the specific things that they had done, we delivered, we incurred costs to try to, to move. So it's part of that same conversation. I'd love to hear what they have to say because my, my concern here is we value engineered this to take cost out. And we've now added in back a third of the numbers that we took out. And the thought to take, you know, 50K out of this and 50K out of that, now there's less funding available for, you know, from the sales tax initiative for the projects that we, we told everybody about. Like, is this the end of the change orders? Because now, you know, we've consumed a third of what we designed out.
There is one other change order that might be pending, but it's not critical. It's to put an exhaust fan in the studio space. If we were to do certain types of activities in there that need exhaust capabilities, I haven't received that change order yet, but they're estimating it at about 1,500.
Okay, that's reasonable. And I mean, it's just a macro issue, right? Because there was 225,000, you know, sort of allocated for furniture. We're taking 100K out of the CIP budget and we're still about 140K for furniture. So we're still, you know, 80K short of what it is that we wanted for furniture. So what, what are the thoughts there?
Well, we're definitely going to be conservative with the furniture. We're going to focus the purchasing on the furniture for the first floor, which will be the everyday furniture for the activity rooms and the open space. Those areas that the public will enjoy every day on a drop-in basis. The second floor, we're probably going to purchase the chairs and maybe not the tables and rent tables. We're not entirely sure how that upstairs space is going to be utilized anyway at this point in time. We have concepts for it to be set up for workshops, conferences, receptions, parties, a variety of things. But until we really experience how the community wants to use that, renting the tables is a good option for that. We're also looking at financing, purchasing of, of any staff area desks and office furniture very efficiently and potentially over time.
No, I appreciate that because I, I mean, I think we saw this with the community center where how we used it evolved. And, you know, I think there's a lot to be said about sort of waiting to see how people want to use it. You know, first everyone's got to figure out how to coexist with two spaces because we went from zero to two in five years. So whatever you can do to sort of maybe push the spending out, you know, to 26, I think is a great idea to sort of let it, you know, sort of find its footing with the community.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Anything further? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
All right, add one question more. Sorry.
Sorry, Mike.
Leslie, for outside groups that utilize this space, do we contemplate charging any sort of use fee to help us recoup some of these costs? Obviously, we're not going to get rich overnight or even in 20 years, but are we going to charge some nominal fee for outside groups to use this space since it is pretty attractive?
Yeah, that's, you have great timing. We are going to be bringing for some additional government fees and charges to the group, I believe, at the first March meeting or at the only first, at the only March meeting.
Yeah, April or March, yeah.
April or March. That's right. So staff have been looking at costs based on square footage, very similar to the community center. So we'll have those numbers to you very soon.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Any additional questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the change orders on 5F.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mayor Protem Serbu.
Second.
Second from council member Miller. Roll call vote please.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Council member Craycraft?
Yes.
Council member Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Council member Shaw?
Yes.
Council member Cowish?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. And we are on to item six, which is consideration of this Superior Community Center reception area project.
Thank you, council. I have several members of the staff here and also Sergeant Solomon to speak on this. But this project is something we, we have been contemplating for quite some time, but funding has, has not been easy to find. Looking at the current reception desk at the community center, it's, it has served its purpose and we have outgrown it in, in several ways. This concept that you see before us was, was just an initial, really back of the napkin kind of sketch that we did over a year ago and got some initial estimates on costs for this. This was also bid as an alternate with the civic space. So we've, we actually have two cost estimates on it as part of that. I know that there's been some, some new ideas and suggestions that have come forth related to this. But some of the themes I think remain the same. The current desk just isn't big enough to accommodate the staff and the needs, storage needs, as well as just interacting with the public. It's just a very small space. It's also directly across from the main entrance, which tends to be a little chilly this time of year. And when you sit at the desk, you have your back to the outdoor windows, which is a little unsettling sometimes when people are walking behind you. And at night, you can't really see it and it, it can not feel real safe with that current location. This location was explored, like I said, over a year ago. There's been some suggestion that maybe we rotate the design about 90 degrees, which would give the staff at that reception desk a better view of the entire first floor area. It would still allow them to see people coming in the door. The short end of that counter would be lower for ADA needs, as well as we interact with a lot of youth. And so we don't want a counter that they can't see over. It also allows somebody to come and sit down if they want to have a conversation and talk through their reservation or whatever it is. Maybe they need some assistance registering for a program. What we've found is our, our staff at the community center have really turned into customer service for really the town overall. In the years that we've been open, they've learned the ins and outs of just about everything the town does. If they don't know the answer, they know who to call and they do a fabulous job for that. And, and having a good space for them to operate in, I think is, is important. As part of the design, we did include a staff, staff office. We have a full-time specialist that oversees all the part-time staff. That person has never had an office. They operate out in the open area and we really would like to provide them a proper office, an area where they can really do business with our instructors, talk to people who are trying to reserve a space. They really need a quiet space to be able to do that, to interact with residents one-on-one and our contractors one-on-one. It also provides direct support for those part-time staff. When that person's there, they're the backup. It also helps provide a backdrop to that reception desk. So people are not approaching you from behind. It's a more secure design. We've talked about whether we need the plexiglass or we don't need the plexiglass. I think when that was initially put in the design, it was pretty close to after the pandemic. And we were all dealing with trying not to spread germs, but that's, that's an easy fix one way or the other. So. But I don't want to do all the talking. The people who sit at this desk day in and day out are here. Tim and Melinda and Sherry are here. I know they'd be happy to, to share thoughts and ideas or answer any questions. And I think Sergeant Solomon had some input on safety and security related to this as well. Tim, you want us to, you want to put in your two cents?
Mike, Mike has a question. He has his hand raised.
Yeah, Leslie, I just want to make sure I understand when you, for orientation standpoint, you said rotate the, off the desk 90 degrees. Would that be rotating it to the left 90 degrees? So it then faces west and you've got more of a 180 degree view of the operating space within the community center?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, but now that begs a question. If it's rotating, then it's backing up to the window again, right?
The office would back up to the window.
Okay, I guess I'm.
So the office and the desk would all rotate as one piece.
Okay. Oh, that's interesting.
So that would put the office still behind
Okay.
the counter and provide that backdrop for them. And the desk would basically face that mural wall with the neon on it.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Leslie. Just want to say thank you for taking time to kind of move this up on the priority list. I know a lot of the GSAs and as we've been kind of growing and changing, the needs of the community center are shifting. And I think we're starting to see what that's looking like. And we're also, we're, we're growing as a staff too. And as we grow as a staff, we have a more diverse staff. So we have people who are six foot four. We have people who might be five feet tall. And those people deserve to be comfortable in the space that they're working every day. And I think that's one of the most important parts that we're kind of going forward with. For me, I have my own opinions, but Brian and I had a staff meeting last Thursday where we just kind of solicited opinions from all the GSAs. I think the major three things that Leslie already hit on. We just want to make sure that however the desk is, it can still maintain community building. It's really important for us. That's our primary mission is to create a space where the community feels welcome. I think that's why there was a little bit of an aversion towards the glass because it feels like it's a little too transactional. So we definitely want to be able to still connect with the community. Other things that have been brought to my attention, people really do enjoy the idea of visibility throughout the whole entire facility so they can see what's going on. That's twofold, you know, it's safety, but it's also kind of understanding who's in the building and where too, especially when it gets later at night because the community center can stay open until 10 o'clock. And you can't have people who are very good at finding a seat that you just can't see. So there is that safety component too. And then, I mean, three, it's just a very simple storage component. When you look at how many activities are going on, I mean, I know you guys come through now. We have everything from poker chips up there to decorations for a teen night. And we just, we just don't have the space to be able to support all these programs without having it bursting at the seams. And that's where I think the storage capacity is going to be a really important factor. I did talk to a couple of people individually too. They really do like the concept of the standing portion and a lower portion for the ADA. Only worry that I've heard from, and this is from, like, we have some older staff, obviously. They are a little bit worried about trying to jump into a chair while they're at the high counter. So I just wanted to make sure that I at least said it. So that way I can make sure that I'm representing everybody's voice that was there. But aside from that, that's kind of the summation of everything that we've heard from the GSAs. And we have some here as well. So I'm sure they'll go ahead and provide some opinions as well. But yeah, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Tim. Questions from staff?
I'd like to hear from the rest of them first before we ask questions.
All right. Melinda, Sherry, come on down.
The 5280s. 5280s here. Hello. Thank you for allowing us to come. You guys are frequent patrons of the community center. So
Hello.
Thank, yes, thank you. You all have actively come to the desk and asked us for our input.
Yes, which we appreciate greatly.
Yes.
Since we live there.
We're calling it the 3D visualization. You let us walk around in circles. And so I, I really feel like you have the concept. And I appreciate Leslie having the idea of adjusting it. So that really, that, that's very helpful. But, and you guys have made some comments about how, you know, we're, it's a little messy when you walk in and it doesn't look very professional. So I think, and with the, you know, it's Tim, I think Tim and Leslie capped it up, but you know, we do have expanding programs. And so, you know, we do have all of that stuff behind the desk and there's no place to put it. And we don't fit, especially with the heater. So, so what are you going to add?
Well, I just want to say thank you for even putting this in because it will make everyone's experience coming into the community center better. It will allow us to greet everyone as they come in. If you've ever walked in the community center, I don't know if you've noticed, but the desk is actually not in the sight of where you walk. So it's easy to walk past us and sometimes we do catch people by surprise when we say hello. So having us in a more central location will definitely add to bringing people in and fostering a more positive environment there. Also, it allows us to get to know them without going, hey, how, how you doing? As they walk by. As far as the design goes, the plexiglass and being a retired teacher, I am 100% down with some of the reasons that we might want to be behind things and have some security. Being by a, a wall of windows is not secure. But we're already in a wall of windows with doors. So us, our GSAs, we would prefer to still have an open desk where we can provide that warmth and friendly, engaging part of the community. We do love the idea of a seated area. So if we have to make someone's account, we can bring them over, sit them down and it doesn't feel stressful to them, a more, a better environment. And standing would be great. I do, yes, there are some challenges up and down out of the stool. So something, maybe if we could have a counter of two different heights to accommodate our staff, that would be excellent. And obviously we would like to put Tim in an office.
But also just from a design point, you know, we've got that gorgeous spine wall that we built, right?
And we block it.
Right. And so just to have, when you walk in the front door, just to have an area where people can, you know, hang out by the windows and enjoy, you know, the, the expanse of the space would actually be lovely.
And we would love to put the sofas that are now to the, the left of the door.
The gathering area there.
Bring them over so that there would actually be an area to view our big, beautiful flower, you know, memorial of the fires, as well as look at the spine wall and be able to experience the whole community center as it.
Yeah.
So thank you guys so much for including us in this decision.
Thank you for being here and for speaking up. Appreciate it. Sergeant Solomon, your thoughts?
Thank you. It's tough when you talk about security when you're in a giant fishbowl. So that place is always, you know, kind of a challenge. I think the, the way that it's designed does a couple of different things to help with security enhancement. For one, I will never put my back against, you know, my back is, my back is always against a hard surface. I always want to look at who's coming through the door, all that. That's because of my profession, right? But not, not having staffs back and being surprised by something, I think is a, is a, a good design that this is doing. I think the other thing that I really look at in the safety and security aspect is right now, if something, you know, an active shooter, somebody needed to call 911, they have no safe space to immediately get to. They're in a desk. Somebody can walk right around that desk, jump over the desk, do whatever they want. When they're in a cubicle like that and especially having the office behind them, something bad happens, you can go into that office, you can make that 911 phone call, whatever needs to happen and you're now in a good, safe space. So I think the security aspect, I think it definitely enhances. It's not perfect. And I don't think you can do anything perfect at the, there because of the, the design. And I, I love the open concept and the doors open during the summer. I mean, all that stuff is great, right? But that sacrifices the overall security. And it's a sad day that we have to always talk about security. But I won't digress and go down that path. But I think this definitely enhances the safety and security of the building.
How do you feel with no plexiglass?
I like the no plexiglass. Plexiglass does a whole lot of nothing. Doesn't, it cracks if a bullet goes through it. Your hand can go through it very easy. I like the interaction. I think it's a lot different than here at town hall. When you've got court, you've got other things going on that can be more controversial. other things going on that can be more controversial and more of a target where the community center isn't that.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Any questions for Sergeant Solomon? All right. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. All right. Discussion.
Design questions.
Yeah, okay, go for it.
If, can we pull up the, the little thing again? I don't know if my laser pointer actually works because I've never had to use it. No. I've got like a dead one. Okay, so I'll try to describe it.
I can help here.
Thank you, okay. So, and I don't know that this is perfect after hearing Sergeant Solomon, but if, oh, he's pulling out their laser pointer, thank you. Any more batteries in mine? It's there. Oh, thank you. Okay.
Stephanie, can you turn your mic on, please?
Oh, sorry, I'm just not speaking right into it. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So for the office, because I know we talked about rotating this kind of down, just so it's not cutting off, because I'm looking at this and it kind of creates a blind spot for everything behind. So I'm wondering if this space I see utilized like once every never, and maybe I'm incorrect and it's being used a ton. It's like, but there's this padded area here too that the kids could still use. I'm wondering if this area could be the office, rotate this down, and then this wall right here, if that could be a ton of cabinets to help with that storage issue. So you're still, if you rotate it, you have full visibility into all sides of the community center, but you still have an office down there in this kind of little nook area that's just the foam building blocks. Would that be, or is that?
I'd have to take a look at it and measure it. It would probably require that they walk through the kids' area to get to the office.
Okay.
I don't know if there's really room to get around it. But we could look at some options with that. It's a pretty simple design.
If I, if I can throw this out, I think it's important to keep the office directly behind it because if you do rotate it and you move the office out of the way, now the GSA individuals are back through to the windows again.
But see, the majority of it is a wall. Like, you'd have this window right here that they'd have their back to, but I think the majority, if it's flipped, the majority would be behind a wall that could then be storage cabinets. And you'd only have, I mean.
No, I see your point with that. I, I kind of feel a little bit more comfortable if it's office and then GSA staff going in, at least there's that one buffer from the outside wall.
So the wall, or the desk would be out here more?
No, rotate everything, the desk stays against the exterior wall, and then the GSA desk just gets rotated 90 degrees counterclockwise. So that way, they've got 180 degrees view of the facility, which should facilitate enough of their ability to watch people without having to get up, actually. I mean, they, they do walk around quite a bit. I do see you guys walking.
Which is fine. You've got plenty of space.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just have this, I designed a prison once and it's just always things in the back of my mind of, of, you know, blind spots. Not that you, not that this is a prison, but there, there is, there's sightlines, there's blind spots, there's a lot in this. So I, I would feel safer if the office was against the wall beforehand.
And just for the record, the blocks is used like crazy.
Is it?
Like a madhouse, yes.
Okay, let's not waste.
You just, you would normally see it, but it's very busy.
Okay. All right, nevermind.
My, my thoughts are, I mean, I appreciate that this got brought to our attention and that we're talking about it. I, I love the community center. My kids are there more than they're not. It's, they're huge, huge users. I love the community center and go there very regularly. And I think that, like, I can't imagine life in Superior without the community center now. Like, it's such, like, what did we do before we had the community center for, like, meetings and, and all that stuff? It's such a huge success. So I think this is just one of those situations where, you know, it has been evolving and, you know, over time. And the way that we're using it is a little different than we originally envisioned, and that's great. And I think that it's terrible that we have a cramped, cold, unsafe desk, so I want to, I want to remedy that. From, from my perspective, in terms of what the design is, what, what my preference would be is come back to us with a proposal that basically all the GSAs say this is fantastic and this is something that we love. So it makes it very easy for us to just say, okay, that works. So, you know, I don't, I'm agnostic as to like how this desk needs to work. I trust your opinion because you're there every day. It seems like it makes sense. I like the idea of make, rotating it and having it this way so you can look this way and you can look this way. Where this desk, where this office goes, if, if it should go right behind it, that's fine. If not, that's fine too. I, I kind of defer to the people who work there who could use the space in the most efficient and effective and comfortable manner. I think we definitely need storage, so like, let's make sure that we're designing it. I would design it, you know, bigger than you even think that we need to because we could always use more space. So cabinets, storage space, I, I think it's such a really good resource for what people used to do to come to Town Hall to get information, they're coming to the community center first because they're just used to it, right? Like, I, I know people are never going to Town Hall and they, they'll just go to the community center because they assume that they, anything that they need, they can get at the community center. So I think it's, it's good for us to just have as much storage as possible, cabinets and, you know, a big desk and a comfortable area for you all to work at different heights and also, you know, to, to structure it in a way that's inviting for, for residents and guests. So I like that idea there. Let's not do Plexiglas if nobody wants it. I, I agree that that doesn't make any sense. And I would just like to see this come back to us with something where we've got the stamp of approval from GSA and from staff and, and we can make short work out of it. But I don't want to approve anything tonight that's, you know, needing to be massaged, so.
You want to see a hard line, right? You want to see a hard line?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see, you know, what the, what the plans, what the plans are going to be, but I just want to make sure that we're not, what I don't want is a design that's being presented without the consideration of the people who are going to be working there every day.
I think they've pretty much got it. Before we brought this to the board, I, I know I chatted with you guys incessantly about this to try to figure out programmatically and the phenomenal architect that Sheri King is, who, I think you guys pretty much have it, yep, you schooled me on a few things. And I always figured you listen to the client because the client knows the best because they're the end user.
Yeah.
I think you guys pretty much know what you want, just maybe sketch it up to us. It doesn't have to be construction drawings, just sketch it on a piece of paper, this is what you want to see, and, you know, bring it back. Because I thi, I think you're like 90% there, you know, from Sergeant Solomon's standpoint to, to the safety, you know, the Plexiglas does nothing, any ballistic resistant film is, is, that doesn't exist, you can shoot through it. So, I mean, that does nothing, all it does is kind of puts you away from people. And that was what you guys don't want. You want to be interacting with community staff. So I think you guys got it. I think you guys know what you want. Just, yeah, like Mark said, just draw it, doesn't have to be professionally done, and just bring it back to us and we'll go from there.
Mike, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to echo what you said, Mark, that if, if the group could come back with maybe two options of, of purpose, two preferred staff options for consideration, that would be great. Again, I want to make sure that the, the staff that are there day in and day out are comfortable in that space and it's functional for them because they're the ones having to use it. And also just want to acknowledge Tim, Melinda, and Sheri for just doing a phenomenal job interacting and greeting all the people that show up at the community center. You always have smiles on your faces and you always make it a very welcoming experience. I just want to say thank you for all that you do for the town of Superior.
Thanks, Mike. One thing I, I wanted to add and it's kind of similar to what I said earlier, but we're, we're not going to be, you know, clairvoyant and like know, like what you need and, and like what doesn't work unless like you bring it to our attention. So I like, I appreciate that this is coming forward to us. And this is kind of similar to like the, the O and M building that we just approved for Public Works and, and our Parks and Rec and Open Space Departments. You know, the current conditions that some of the employees of this town work in are embarrassing and that's unacceptable, but we don't have a visibility of that because we're not going to work in those conditions on a day in, day out basis. So the only way that we can know to like remedy those situations is if it's brought to our attention, we understand the scope of the problem, and then we can address it. Because I want everybody who works for the town to work in a place that they enjoy it working or it's comfortable, where it's not cold, where it's not unsafe, and where you actually have like the facilities that you deserve to have working here, so. I'll get off my soapbox now.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments, and I appreciate where this is going because, you know, I think if we think back to 2019, 2020, we spent a tremendous amount of time with the community to dial in all these components. And as we talked about, the building evolves, right? So, you know, I think any sort of reception desk space was an absolute afterthought in the, in those drawings. I went back to look at everything that Oz had and they just kind of like, you know, drew a little pencil, like, and we'll put the desk over here, right? And that's what we're suffering through because how this building is being used is not sort of what we all envisioned, right? It wasn't going to be, you know, they come here for all answers to town questions, that's what this building's supposed to be, but it's evolved, so we're going to, we're going to evolve with it. So I appreciate that the drawings coming back because I, I feel like everything about this, this building right now is so creative. The spine wall is so neat, they spent a gazillion dollars to get it built, I remember that. But it is one of the key attributes. What I'd love to see is a little more creativity with this desk because right now it looks like, you know, P and G just, and no offense, but it just feels like they just, you know, got a ruler and drew some straight lines and called it done. Like, I feel like, you know, when we think about art in this building and how, how the different murals, the neon, and then the giant flower, all to kind of make the building more homely. This building to, or this desk to me feels like I'm being punished, no offense. It feels like there could be more there that the staff would love to see incorporated in it. Maybe, you know, talk to CAPS because there's tons of artists on the registry that we could use as well. But I also want to, when it comes back, I want to understand how we're paying for it. You know, because right now it's in here for 80,000. I, you mentioned the RFP, but you know, anything over 50K has to have an RFP that goes to it. So if we're going to waive that, then that's fine, but I want to make sure that we contemplate how this is getting paid for because if we're designing it, it's got to get rebid, redesigning it. Because P and G, did they get the bid? I, I'm not quite sure.
No, they just provided the cost estimate.
Okay.
It was an alternate that was in the design for the civic space, but it really was just this conceptual. We haven't really paid for a design, so.
Got it, okay.
We, you know, once we vet out all the different items that are important, that RFP will need to include design and build.
Got it, okay. And then my last point is, and I completely agree that Tim needs space, I also want to understand, you know, do we have space across the street that some of the folks in the community center could potentially move so Tim could have an existing office space? Because this is going to take six months to get built, you know, so how do we ensure that he's got an office space today by maybe moving some folks around, you know, from the office spaces that we have?
We are still shy, three offices, so even moving people into the civic space.
Actually, I mean, when I meant across the street, I meant the Superior Plaza.
I don't know that we have any vacancies there at this point in time.
All right, then, that takes care of that. Okay. All right. I think that's it for me then.
I actually had a bullet point about the desk too being a little unwelcoming, so I'm engaging with Oz Architecture on something totally separate, but we were talking about reception desks and they had mentioned that you can get wraps, so obviously CAPS would be one option, but you can get wraps that look like wood or really whatever you want it to look like to kind of dovetail well with how everything looks very natural and kind of environmental in there. So that might be another option as we're looking at that, but I'm sure that would come up down the road. And then just want to echo the comments, thank you guys so much for all you do because you're always just a very friendly face every time anybody's ever in there and just really appreciate how welcoming you are for the community, so, thanks. And for all your engagement too, because all the emails that we've been getting from you guys with regard to like making sure there's enough electrical and, and things like that are extremely helpful. So appreciate your reaching out.
But it's always going to be a lot of fun to just put Tim in an office, so.
We need him in the building now. We need the GSS, whether it's Tim or anybody else, that needs to be, because they are the front desk filters so that they can tell Brian, oh my gosh, this is crazy, and Brian can tell Leslie so that they know what's happening. And if no one's living it with us, they don't know what is actually going on. So that's why having that office engaging with us is actually really important. I mean, you want to find someone to go to.
Yeah, I was thinking more of, let's make sure he's got office space in the community center. If we need to displace other people from the community center because they're not mission critical to that building.
Right.
I'd love to, I, I'm okay with that. You know, obviously it's Leslie's staff to manage, but I want to make sure, you know, because it's Tim's building and everybody else is there working for him, that he's there, not, you know, in one of the other nine places.
Yeah, he's in emergency. Yeah.
Right.
Any additional questions, comments?
I just want to, really quickly, don't, don't look at this as a hard line exercise. You know, the problem a lot of times, you see something, a hard line, it's done, it's a design, but this, what I'm anticipating with, this is just a conversation to begin the way we proceed to getting our most essential staff at this building, the next step. And I don't necessarily think you need to do two or three or four different designs. You guys know what you want, just, and just take a piece of paper with a pen, doesn't need the ruler, make the lines wavy and stuff, and just tell us what you want that way. And that is pretty much all we're really looking for. We just want to figure out what you need. So I tell clients, just, just give me what you need and then we'll make it happen because you guys know way, way better than we do. So I think, you know, one, the three of you know, I've talked to the three of you ad nauseam about this, and Sheri, you have schooled me on a number of these things here, so, you know, we always learn, right? But yeah, just.
Teacher.
Yeah, she asked. Yeah. Yeah, so just, you know, make it fun and just, you know, don't feel like there's a pressure to actually fully design the thing. Just, just have a, just a quick scheme of it and just bring it back to us and let's take a look at it, and I think we'll go forward with that.
Thank you.
All right. You've got the direction that you need? All right, thanks for taking the time to be here and thank you for everything that you do for our wonderful community center and our town. Okay.
And thank you, Chief, too.
Do we have anybody in the public that wanted to give public comments on that? We've got one person on Zoom. It's Michelle. Yeah, that's right. All right, I'm assuming no. Okay, we are at 8 o'clock and our next item is going to be executive session, so should we take a break first and then go into executive session or go in first?
We have to switch over anyway, so if we want to go in and then.
All right, so, all right, we're on to item number seven, which is executive session. Hold, hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to Colorado revised statute section 24-6-4024B regarding legal issues and original town and related contract matters. We have a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Craig Craft. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Lasas?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?